Let's call the word this City of Ashramont City Council Meeting. It's Tuesday, October 21st, 2025, 6 o'clock PM. If anybody would like to leave us an indication.
Dear Lord, thank you for this day and thank you for the opportunity to gather here and do the work in this community. I pray that you guys as we make decisions and just watch over us, you guys give me a thing that you want to pray.
Amen.
Pledge allegiance. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic which stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Honored and tested flag, I pledge allegiance to the Texas, one state, under God, one and indivisible.
Anybody have anything for open forum? If I just ask you now or your reporter, whoever, I didn't, I haven't looked. That with the one resident, the business owner asked about that spot covered up, has it got covered up?
It's done yet.
Okay, sweet. Awesome.
Yeah, that's good.
Okay.
Good deal.
Onto, if nobody has anything else, accounts payable?
I'm number five.
There he is.
I'm gonna have to pay bills.
Okay. All in favor? Any opposed? Motion carries to pay the bills?
Is that gonna put some binders where they go?
We started with a quorum, we can continue the meeting.
Approving next, September 16th, 2025, public hearing and regular meeting.
I'd like to mention the peremptment.
Be careful, guys.
Yes, sir.
Thank you for your service, Daniel.
You're welcome.
Anything, holler.
See you later.
Thanks, sir.
What are we gonna do?
We can continue, I mean, we started with a quorum, we can continue, I mean, you see what's on the agendas, not much, so.
We.
Yeah, and a bunch of my stuff's.
It doesn't necessarily have to, you know, doesn't have to.
What'd you say, Steve?
We had to cancel our board meeting last night, so there's a bunch of my stuff's not gonna be covered. But I mean, this will maybe be irrelevant, but. We're meeting next, we're meeting next Tuesday night, I can say.
We're on the, on the. Just wanna continue?
It's up to y'all.
How you feel?
I'm good.
I'm good.
Okay. Ashramont EDC IDC update, discuss and take action as needed. There's a line of things on here, I'll just, whether we go over them or not, because what you just said, I'll just go ahead and verbalize. Provide financial for third quarter, new EDC board member recommendation, reinstate existing EDC IDC board members for a two-year term. Loan to New Creations Ceramics LLC, update on the Welcome to Ashramont signs, promote proposed mural by studio at Stonewall. Update on vendor lot proposal, community survey, distribution plan, decorating downtown for Christmas begins soon. Good evening.
Good evening. Would it break me to ask you all, I have a tendency to over-communicate. Am I exhausting you with too much of our agenda items and stuff that we're doing? Or, I don't know how you're used to it in the past, but when I took this position, transparency was a big part of my platform. And so, I wanna, I wanna update you on everything that we're doing, I won't even leave some stuff off that's minor. But these are kind of the.
Yeah.
Highlights, but if you don't need all of this, then I can start pulling it back a little bit.
Okay.
For any way you feel comfortable.
Yeah, whatever, however you feel.
We got questions we'll ask.
Exactly.
Yeah.
More information, you give us less questions, we probably ask.
Yeah, I mean, I just like giving you as much information as possible, just to kind of get to let you know what's going on.
Yeah.
And so, like I said, I'm not familiar with what you're used to, but that's kind of how I like to roll. So, I provided you the balance sheet, probably lost for the third quarter for EDC and IDC, if there were questions on that. Like I said, we had to cancel our board meeting last night, one of our board members that would've made our quorum on the IDC side had a seizure and she just could not be there. So, we had to cancel the meeting and reschedule it next Tuesday night. Which, of course, we would've covered the EDC, the new EDC board member recommendation and the reinstatement of the board members. We're gonna get a confirmation that they're all wanting to be reinstated, so we'll have to push that to next, next month. And I'm sure you're probably hearing the rumbles, loan to New Creations Ceramics, a new ceramic studio and boutique there. And much coveted Deer Hunter Lodge, that was next to the pharmacy. And my, my wife went to the courthouse and found, figured out who owned it and made direct contact with him. And he had an appetite for either selling it or leasing it, so it worked out to be a blessing for her, you know? She's real excited and appreciative of the loan and so we're looking to open a soft opening first of November and the grand opening fifteenth of November. The Welcome to Ashramont signs are in production, they'll be delivered in that warehouse, really turned into being a blessing because I needed a place to assemble them. So, we'll, we'll add the signs and posts and everything from Snyder Steel, delivered there, that warehouse, and then we'll assemble them. Then I've got Mike, Michael, I just drew a blank on his last name, forgot his name.
Michael English.
Thank you. Michael English is gonna help us and Bodie Hand is gonna help us with the welding. And so, we're, I'm thinking probably realistically with everything else that I've kind of got going on with the Christmas decoration. It's probably gonna be late November before I can get those signs in the ground. But that's, that's pending the production stays on schedule, which was supposed to be first week in November. So. And the proposal mural from Studio at Stonewall is, we had to postpone, but it's relative to the south end of the, of the EDC building. The Mozart lease space, that brick wall that faces the post office, they're wanting to do a mural of the students and Melanie through her studio. And she was gonna make the proposal to the, to the boards to get their approval to do a mural on that end of the building.
What, you mean the, the south end of the, the face of the post office?
Yeah.
Sorry, I missed that.
Post office. I mean, our, our ultimate goal and plan, of course, is with the great money to, to paint the exterior of that entire building anyway. So, that'll kind of coordinate with, you know, painting the buildings and, and the mural, of course, will just add to it.
What kind of mural?
She, she kind of described it to me, but it's kind of a, I'd be hesitant to even try to describe it. It's, it looked, she had a kind of a rough draft of it, it looked pretty awesome.
Cool.
It's kind of similar to what the young lady's doing in, in.
Snyder.
Snyder. In Haskell and, you know, it's, it's pretty good stuff. So, I'm, I'm sure the boards are gonna be favorable to consider what it looks like right now. I mean, you can't do anything but hurt or help the appearance of that building. The update on the vendor lot proposal, we were gonna meet on that, kind of make some decisions on that, Lorenzo, so we'll, we'll have to deal with that too tonight as well. But the, I kind of threw it out there in open forum last month to get a feeler and everybody was pretty, pretty positive on the idea. So, I feel confident we'll do something with that. And the community survey, community development survey, maybe heard a little bit about this. We've got West Central Texas Council of Governments to help us do a survey that we've already started distributing through Facebook. We're gonna also do it through some print media outlets, that one of the things that we were gonna decide on was a budget cost to do that. But there'll be a QR code that comes out in the print media, somebody can scan and takes you straight to Survey Monkey. And then there's a three, three key questions that the boards decided out of 10 that the citizens can give input. Kind of get some highlights of what they feel like is most important to them and their families. Stuff that they would participate in, ideas of what would be most impactful to renovate from downtown, stuff like that. Digital billboard that we proposed and some other stuff, so. We feel like the, the community survey is gonna give us a real heartbeat of kind of what, what the community's wanting. So, it's, we feel, feel positive about the, the effects of it. Then ultimately, if, if that, if the survey turns out to be what we're hoping it does, then we're probably looking at a feasibility study. Done as well with Central Texas Council of Governments, that's a mouthful. So, we're excited about that because they're, they're a phenomenal resource. Just awesome. So, we're, we're gonna utilize them in every way we can, as low budget as possible. And then if the feasibility study becomes legitimate, then we'll look at the budget for that as well. And then last is decorate for Christmas. That's my, the next, the next 60 days, probably, not 80 days. It's creeped up on me here a little bit, it's gonna be here for another. But my plan this year, last year, we kind of got started with decorating the, the center courtyard out towards the highway. This year, I'm looking to light up that whole courtyard. All the way over in front of senior citizens, all the way to the highway. With ground lighting and tree, tree lights and, you know, some ground tall metal Christmas trees with lights on and some other animated stuff, so. And then we'll do the annual Christmas lighting deal. This is November 29th, is that right? Parade, Christmas parade? Don't, I think it's the 29th, Saturday, the 29th. Of course, we'll do our Christmas tree lighting deal that night as well. So, that's kind of the highlights, I mean, there's some other stuff that's going on, we're, you know, we're trying to move and shake and do everything we can to impact the community. There's a lot of, we're getting, we've got some advertising goals that we're looking at and incorporating through. One of the things that are, we feel like that we need to do, especially with Abilene, with the growth, the AI plant coming to Abilene is we need exposure outside of Ashramont. And looking at using Abilene Reporter to advertise on their digital and print media. And with KBRP there at Haskell, doing a radio spot to promote our, what we're gonna call the Art Walk in downtown. Which is, is with the new businesses that have come in, the, the Studio of Stonewall and then the Ceramic Studio, New Creations. And then the Ashramont Tree and then the quilt store. So, we kind of feel like we've, we've got something going on there that's, that we need to promote outside of Ashramont. And so, we're gonna do, we're looking at doing, I've got some budgets, some cost estimates coming in that I'm gonna present to the boards next week. To do a radio ad to promote that as well as, promote the Art Walk as well as our Christmas parade and tree lighting and all.
Yeah.
Just kind of promote it all at the same time.
Heck yeah.
So. Sometimes I feel like I exhaust y'all, but. Anybody got any questions?
On the Christmas lighting, have y'all discussed or talked about any, like, the Chamber used to do lighting for anybody that wanted to do on their buildings. Have y'all looked into that again?
Yeah, we did, well, at least it does their own thing, you talking about downtown?
No, I was sort of, used to they do.
It was all business.
Any building I wanted to, all the way through.
Right, right, yeah, we did the, we kind of did the front here for the city building, but we hadn't really done anything with the other buildings and the business still. You said the Chamber used to decorate the whole town?
Yep. They would go, they would charge, what, 30 bucks? I mean, obviously, probably have to go up now, but it wasn't very expensive.
It wasn't expensive at all.
And they would come by and put up lights on any business that wanted to have it throughout town. I mean, it used to look pretty nice, everything was.
Looked like what Hamlin does on there, with all their lights.
The way you have every single business, at least the front of the business has, just has lots of lights.
Right, right, yeah, it was kind of our concept with putting the lights out up here last year, hoping that it would prompt people to participate. But we didn't, obviously, we didn't see too much from the businesses. But for example, ranchers and, I don't know about Dairy Queen being corporate, but they are privately owned, so they may participate. That's a great idea, I mean, that's probably more on my plate than I'm gonna be able to handle this year, unless we can get some volunteers to step up. But that's something, you know, I'm gonna present that to the, to the boards as a.
Well, I think the Chamber used to hire a couple people to.
Yeah.
That way you don't have to do it yourself, you just hire somebody to do it. Hire a couple of hands, I think, I think they had two or three hands.
Yeah, they had two or three people.
He's volunteering. I mean, I love that, especially considering, you know, what we're trying to do is get the whole community involved, so that's good. I'll be sure to mention that to them. Anything else?
When did you, did you say when your, your meeting is going to?
Tuesday night.
Tuesday night, next Tuesday?
Yes, sir.
So, what time is that meeting?
6 o'clock. So, we'll. We'll just add everything to the report for next month that we, that didn't cover, weren't able to cover tonight.
Got it, man.
Worked. All right?
All right. Thanks, sir.
Thank you.
Appreciate it, appreciate it, thanks for y'all's time.
Thank you.
See you, Jeff.
See you.
Sort of like I just wanted to check briefly, that obviously, we can't vote on anything, if there is anything to vote on, I don't think that we should, without the forum, if you don't want to. We just kind of wanna go over the options that we all want to do, either adjourn or recess, see how long it takes for them to get back, or just keep going, but everything will just be discussion only. Am I wrong about any of that?
Yeah, I mean, it doesn't have to be discussion only, but yeah, if that's what you want to do, go wait for other input, that's fine.
Every guidance that I have found on it suggests that when a quorum is lost.
Yeah.
Especially for like a catastrophe, there's actually listed in there for catastrophe, such as fire being one of them, that all of the deliberations and information gathering should cease or recess.
Yeah.
It can happen, reconvening can happen tomorrow, I mean, as early as tomorrow, it could recess until tomorrow or later this evening, however y'all choose. But every piece of guidance says that when a quorum is broken, that deliberations should recess.
Yeah.
Not necessarily meaning that you have to adjourn the meeting, I mean, you can recess it, carry it over till the next day. Within 72 hours is what I, I mean, the next 72 hours.
It's up to y'all.
Well, that was, the only thing is that you're reporting the backhoe, right?
Yeah, and the backhoe.
Oh, wait, well, there was executive session.
Yeah, there was, but it, it wouldn't wait. I mean, it didn't, it didn't have to be right now, the executive session, we don't have to talk about that, it's nothing pricey or anything, it needs to be dealt with right away, it can wait.
That we, was there?
Now, the back, the backhoe is kind of timed, it's due, because there's, one company has some money they have to spend by the end of the month. So, they're giving us kind of a, a little bit more money.
Was that where you looked for a vote on something on that?
As far as backhoe, though, yeah, it would have been, but we can, we can also adjourn the call.
Did you already vote on that?
No.
We didn't vote on that?
No, we didn't.
Pushed it, they kind of tabled it.
Yeah, I was tabled.
They pointed some quotes on like, some used ones.
Yeah, I got those, but.
To compare.
Yep. Can y'all meet?
I can't.
Tomorrow. What's, what's that?
Yeah, tomorrow's meeting.
Well, we still have to put out a, it was a, I mean, unless we don't adjourn, we take a recess and then wait the time and come back. If we adjourn, then we're still gonna have to put out a 70, for 72 hours before we can meet again.
But if you recess, you could reconvene.
Within those 72 hours.
Within the, I mean, we could do it like early in the morning tomorrow.
Has that part changed, like the other part of posting agendas?
No. The, oh, you're talking about the, it's like a special meeting there? I don't know. No, I didn't see any legislation with that, I mean, I didn't look particularly at that part. There's no telling when we're meeting with that fire, you know, so.
Don't tell her.
Make phone call? Can ask? Interesting situation.
I don't, I'm busy. It's a, it says an interesting situation, a fire.
Hey, I didn't mean to like bother you while you're fighting or anything, I'm just gonna. Okay, so, okay. So, any kind of idea in time, because I'm just curious? No, well, I mean, we can't really do anything, and so, we're trying to decide what to do. So, I'm just seeing if y'all thought y'all might make it back, if, if not, that's okay, we understand.
Maybe they'll meet tomorrow, depending on what time.
You sure?
I think we can meet tomorrow evening.
All right. Okay, okay. He said give them a couple minutes.
Turn a little bit later.
So, they're just kind of on a goose chase, he said he'll have at least a couple of minutes, they can run up here, and if they have to leave again, then they have to leave again. Sound okay?
Gonna make a motion to recess?
Make a motion to recess, Zoe? To record?
Yeah.
Do we record returns?
Yeah, and we can do that. Okay. All in favor, opposed, carries, going to recess at 6:23 PM until we can regather. Have you changed your mind on any of it?
I haven't, I don't know if you, like I said, I don't know if you guys looked, the, ASCO all stayed the same, the quote stayed the same, because we already had it. Use one John Deere, forget the John Deere, the, the new one that they, they quoted us, most of it is new, but it's, it's actually a bigger backhoe than what we have and, and bigger than the one that they quoted us for new purchase. The, you can see the trading value, they actually give us quite a bit more trade-in if we go with the used, bigger machine than if we go with the brand-new machine. About $500, $500 difference, as far as trading goes, that still brings the total price a little higher than the, than the new one. I believe the, that backhoe has 318 hours on it, has everything that we're looking for as far as what we wanted, but that is the, the only different quote that we have from last time. That's the one you like, the John Deere? I'm kind of leaning more that way, they did give us the full warranty on the used John Deere too, if that's something that maybe you just want to look into. ASCO still just a one-year warranty with the option to file on the warranty from them, but. As you can see on the John Deere, it's, the trailer's not included in the main quote, trailer's $24,000 added to that.
The difference in the, the 320 and the 310 Deere?
No.
No.
Boom length or just, just, uh?
I think it's horsepower.
Just power, yeah.
I think boom gets the same, because they're both extended, extended. We gotta go any deeper than that, not getting in a hole or putting the eyes on it.
I looked it up the other day, the P T and H, that's powertrain and hour warranty, right?
This is the, this one says four to six weeks to get it home for the John Deere. The used one I know they have, they have it there, uh, the new one, I'm not sure what the. Time it been gone. Yeah, it doesn't specify. So you were liking the, the used?
I like either one of them, the most better than what we got.
You say how old it was?
It's twenty, uh, the, the bigger one, the used one?
Yeah.
It's a twenty-four.
You know, do we know who had it?
It was a, it's one that they keep there on the yard for a.
For a while.
I actually saw that one when I went down there and talked to the guys about it.
Yeah.
So I don't necessarily know that we need the extra horsepower, but it can't hurt to have it. I love these.
Yes, ma'am.
Okay.
What about the trailer, would it be the same as that's on the new one?
Yeah, it's the same trailer.
It'd be the same trailer, and that, that price is not figured in?
Right, that price is not figured into the total, okay, right. Right, it's twenty-four thousand on top.
Yeah, yeah. On top of both of them?
You just.
Or just the new one?
Yeah, just the new one.
Okay, okay.
No, it, it is on top of both of them.
It's already added.
It's on Asko's.
Yeah, 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 it's, it's not on John Deere, so you have to add the twenty-four to each John Deere quote.
So if you're looking at the John Deere, it's gonna be like one twenty-nine?
Right.
Or one twenty-six?
Right. Basically, the new one, they're swapping the trailer for the backhoe, because it's same, same price as the trailer they gave us.
Have these quotes actually already expired?
Yeah, yeah, but they'll keep, they, they'll hold them, they've, they've been in contact with me quite a bit.
Okay. Something, there's just a three thousand dollar difference between the two.
All pretty close, huh?
They're all pretty close, yeah.
How y'all feeling? I like the new deer. It's the way I'm doing, I don't have to go with the. I mean, especially out of the two of them. So there's not a whole lot of difference in the price.
Right.
Have some brand new. I'd rather go up on horsepower, save the three hundred and eighteen hours.
That's true.
How often are you gonna be? How often do you have to spare a whole of that trailer?
No, it just depends on what we got between here and Askew. We probably made the last two months probably five trips that way, but there's. We usually, we go three or four months without having to do anything that way. It's because of what the ground's doing, I guess, really.
Why are you asking?
Well, it's just. You're gonna spend this, this, this much money and be rigged up and have. New backhoe, new trailer, and I was thinking, if you're gonna be hooking up and unhooking a bunch, get the hydraulic jacks, get, get the electric jacks, and. It's like twelve hundred dollars, you know? It'll save you a lot of headache, but if you're not pulling it that much, then it may be more of a headache than.
Right. We got it.
That's all I'm saying.
Yeah.
I trust you guys, y'all are the experts on this, about this.
I'll breeze guessing too.
What do you think, Chris?
I don't know. There's enough difference to matter, or either, just gonna, whatever you wanna pick, especially if I wouldn't do one. And I don't think there's enough price difference in the usual, if you own a used, so I think. Pick the trailer you want, and they'll both be. That's way better than what we got with me, and.
Oh, yeah.
And that one better go.
Yeah, yeah.
The big thing would be to keep on it, and, you know, keep it traded in or updated as we can, rather than getting in the same situation where.
Yeah, waiting this long.
Yeah, for sure. Like, Asko's taking care of us very well, the only thing I don't like about Asko is their, is their warranties not as, as good as John Deere. It is. A little further away to service it too.
True. Kind of agree, Bailey, you feel the middle?
No, I, I agree.
Would it be fair to say that the new deer is preferable? Is that what you're looking at?
That's what I'm with me.
I'd rather get one new, it's been, rather than ragged out on.
He really wants to hop up and turn the cart wheel.
Okay, but everybody is in agreement with.
I'm easily looking for a motion. Spend that much money.
I'm gonna purchase the three-ten John Deere Becker. With the Olshe trailer, with the. Thank you.
Yes.
It's the three.
It's three-teen.
Oh, right there, okay, I was trying to figure out where that was. Yeah, they need the.
There's another one down there.
Oh, I have to.
Part of you though. Let it last. All right, let's, they're being real.
Cody motion, did I miss a second or?
Second.
All the attachments will go over there too?
Yeah.
Need to tell or do we just test it off?
Yeah, I would do.
One, two, four, twenty? Right?
Yes.
Plus twenty-four?
Yes.
Reaching. Somebody double check, just to make sure.
Twenty-six point twenty.
If I can.
I'll lock my cell phone off, huh?
Yes, ma'am. Okay. Any opposed, all in favor? Motion carries. To purchase the John Deere backhoe. At, uh, the price presented, one hundred and two thousand dollars, four hundred and twenty. And the trailer for twenty-four thousand. The D T two-five-five-two E G N Goose neck.
Thank you, guys. Sure, guys, appreciate it.
Take your shoes off, we'll get it.
We even passed it on the seat.
We did, well, we got, we still got the cardboard before.
Yeah.
With that, we're going to, I don't remember nine, city administrator's report, uh, discussing the action again.
Uh, just a few things to kind of update you on, uh. As far as T C G goes, there are reboot, uh, I was contacted by Reboot the other day. Uh, which is the, uh, nonprofit that was donating all the money for the cleanup. Uh, the people that donated that money has asked, asked Reboot to donate that money to the city for cleanup. And just to take it out of Reboot's hands, in case we wanted to do something with it. Uh, spoke with the attorney, we, we cannot legally accept that as, as a donation, uh, there's only certain things we can accept, uh, as part of the nation, and that's not one of them. Uh, do let Reboot know, they're gonna need to contact with the donors, and kind of see what they want, what they want to do from there. Uh, so that's where, that's where we are kind of on that deal. Uh, I was hoping we could receive it and, uh, you know, dish it out as we cleaned up, and we're not allowed to. Uh, I did receive, I got an email from the owners of the, uh. The house on Smith Street, uh, we've been talking about for some time to get it cleaned up. Uh, that is Smith Street, right? Yeah, okay. So they contacted me and basically what they said is they need some help. Uh, they're willing to do whatever they need to do.
Hours?
The owner, yes. And they, they need some help. Uh, I reached back out to them through the email, uh, told them, please come visit with me, sit down, and we'll see what we can work out. Try to get that property taken care of, uh, so hopefully there's some light at the end of that tunnel. I haven't set up a meeting time with them yet, haven't heard back from them yet, but hopefully that will happen pretty soon. And, uh, we can get that taken care of, uh, that's my hopes anyway. As far as T C G, that's all I have for them. Uh. I don't know if you guys have been around the school, actually have, or what the city had, had, uh, Chris guys have been down there, uh. Justin, Justin been down there, uh, right in front of Danny Walker's house, I don't know if y'all have noticed that, that road was pretty bad, always held water right through there. And, uh, so that road's been completely redone, uh, Justin came in, uh, tore the road up, uh, brought material in, uh, laid it all out, Chris came in, shot it, uh, his guy had done there. Looks really good, looks really good, I think it's gonna work really well moving that water out of there. Uh, so that's been done, uh, completely finished now, I mean, it's.
Well, we'll put another course on it.
Okay. Uh, yeah, looks really good. Uh, I did visit with Chris, and, uh, I think he's visited with Justin some about taking out the dip. The old dip there, right by the, going down that school road, uh, when they were doing that work down there, I did go down there to get that even. It's all concrete, but it is starting to break up too, where all that water goes through there. Uh, along with that, sorry.
I'm just being real, I'm saying. So like, where's the water gonna go if you?
What, what we'll do, the plan, my thoughts is put two big tin horns through it, so the water will still flow. And it'll just go over the top, it won't be a dip anymore. Uh.
I jumped.
Back it up in your yard. Yeah. It's gonna flow that way, actually.
Do it.
The green is grass.
Right. So also, I don't know if you guys been down that road lately, right next to that, uh, to that dip, that sidewalk there is kind of, it's broken, linked over. Uh, it needs to be repaired too, it's a big safety issue right there, anybody walking through there, so. Plan is to, if we can get that dip done, we'll look at getting that sidewalk done too, and getting that taken care of, getting it straightened out, so. Those are two, those are some things that we're working on right now, trying to make things better around there. The only other thing I have is, uh, the first of November, or I guess it's the third through the fifth, uh, Junior, myself will be attending the water school in Abilene, I mean, Lovet, so we'll be out that for those three days. And then I believe it's the week after, uh, if scheduling works out right. Uh, have to go to animal control school to get some continued education. Uh, and then I'll have to take a couple, we'll have to take a couple more classes to get our, complete all our hour, but. Uh, just kind of want to make you aware of that, and where I'll be, what we'll be doing, so. But that's all I have, really.
I heard something, I lost it.
You're gonna take some other dip, something.
Well, yeah. Think of it as soon as we're here. When we get there.
I rent the car, I'm gonna do, I tried to jump it. Don't tell my son.
He's not watching.
He's not watching.
All right, well, we're going to, um, aisle number ten, which is executive session, five-five-one point oh-seven-four, discuss take action as needed over personnel matters, and we will need to, uh, do you wanna go into that? Or a motion to go into executive session?
Much will you enter into executive session?
A second.
All in favor? You oppose, motion carries to, um, come out of this meeting at six fifty P M and enter executive session at six fifty P M.